Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for March 13th, 2018. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Sister Agnes Mary from St. Michael Parish to lead us in prayer, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, Sister, I'm Bejaveen.
Please bow your heads in prayer. Oh Almighty God bless us as we gather for this meeting. Guide our minds and hearts so that we will work for the good of our community and be of help to all people. Teach us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Do not let self-interest or greed influence us, for you have chosen us to serve your people. We give you praise and glory, Lord our God, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sister. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German? Absent. Commissioner Renssiasipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Madam Clerk, am I presenting this to anyone?
Uh, yes.
See somebody out there.
Are you the somebody?
I'm the somebody.
Well, then, let's take care of this. Come on up. And somebody, please give your name for everybody.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Donnie Johnson, and I'm the Director of Volunteer Program Development for the Girl Scouts of Michigan Shore to Shore here in Muskegon.
And one of the reasons why I've never took rid of my Christmas weight because of those poisonous cookies. Ten additional pounds from Dozy Dose.
That's right.
But it is my pleasure to proclaim celebrating Girl Scout Week and the importance of girls' leadership development. Whereas the Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader and provider of best leadership development experience in the world for girls, and whereas Girl Scouts bring time-tested methods and research-backed programs that speak to the strength of girls' leadership development backed by more than 100 years of experience and expertise in the field, and whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas Girl Scouting is continuing a legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place, and whereas Girl Scouts offer hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning in STEM, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable life skills, helping all girls to take lead early and often, and whereas only Girl Scouts offer a girl a one kind of opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing an issue they feel passionately about, and whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn, acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication, not only bettering herself but to making the world a better place for others. And whereas the Girl Scouts were founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character, and through her legacy continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen J. Galrin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Muskegon, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout Movement and Girl Scout of Michigan Shore to Shore and recognize today as Girl Scout Week in celebration and recognition of the girl-led, all-girls-based where girls thrive and develop their talents and leadership skills and make this a better home for all of us.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Great.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve the minutes of the February 27th, 2018 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Fire Hearst Hydraulic Ram Public Safety, summary request, the Director of Public Safety requests that the Commission authorize the amount of $17,130 for the purchase of two Hearst Hydraulic Ram Tools with four EXL Lithium Ion Batteries and Charging Units. The Muskegon Fire Department's antiquated Hydraulic Ram Tool is in disrepair and outside the scope of service life. The two Ram Tools will be utilized in critical lifesaving situations for efficient extracations and to complement our battery-operated Hearst Spreader and Cutting Tools. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the two Hearst Hydraulic Ram Tools. Approval of building contract for 1025 East Forest Avenue Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to award the building contract for the rehabilitation of 1025 East Forest Avenue to Custom Exteriors for the City of Muskegon's Home Buyers Program through CNS. Staff recommendation to award Custom Exteriors the rehabilitation contract for 1025 East Forest in the amount of $61,051 for the Community and Neighborhood Services Office. Purchase of the home at 1188 Fourth Street Planning Economic Development. Summary request, staff is requesting approval to purchase the home at 1188 Fourth Street for $85,000 plus closing cost. The seller is also requesting that the city pay the outstanding 2017 and 2018 taxes and the transfer taxes. This property is important for the redevelopment of the area, including the next phase of Midtown Square Homes. Staff recommendation to allow the City Manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the seller. One-year janitorial services extension Department and Municipal Services. Summary request, extend the current janitorial service contract with Reliant Professional Cleaning for City Hall and the Public Service Building for one year through April 30th, 2019. Staff recommendation, approval of the one-year extension with Reliant Professional Cleaning Services to provide cleaning services through April 2019. Mercy Health Easement DPW. Summary request, Mercy Health has requested an easement for ingress egress across city property at the end of Harvey Street for access to a newly constructed employee parking lot. Maintenance repairs and snow plowing for the easement property are the sole responsibility of Mercy Health, and maintenance and repair work require prior approval by the city. Staff request that the easement be approved for signature. Staff recommendation, approval of the easement for signature. State Revolving Fund DEQ Loan Program Engineering Costs DPW Water and Sewer. Summary request, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Pryne &amp; Newhoff to develop a project plan for the city sanitary sewer, which is required to apply for a low-interest state revolving fund loan from the MDEQ. With the completion of the SAW Management and Wastewater Grant work, the city is in a position to take advantage of the MDEQ Loan Program, which provides funding to address the failing infrastructure discovered during the asset inventory. Our city's demographics may allow us to receive some principal forgiveness. Pryne &amp; Newhoff is being recommended since they manage the SAW grant work and have familiarity with the needs of our sanitary sewer system. The engineering cost is not to exceed $55,000. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Pryne &amp; Newhoff for engineering services to develop an SRF project plan for the city sanitary sewer system. Purchase Agreement 241 and 255 West Western, 1251 Eighth Street. City Manager, summary request, city staff has been working with a housing developer that is interested in creating multifamily housing in Muskegon. After careful consideration, the developer has identified three parcels, 241 West Western, 255 West Western, and 1251 Eighth Street. Staff recommendation, to authorize the City Manager to negotiate a purchase agreement with Dustin Ding Custom Homes for $75,000, providing 60 days of due diligence for the purchaser and up to 18 months for completion of the projects. 880 First Selective Demolition, Abatement, and Site Prep. City Manager, summary request, city staff is seeking permission to begin selective demolition of the five-story office building located at 880 First Street. Three bids were received, with the lowest responsible bidder being Melching. Staff is seeking approval to reimburse Port City Group up to $350,000 to undertake the selective demolition, abatement, and site preparation. Staff recommendation to authorize the City Manager to reimburse Port City Group up to $350,000 to undertake the selective demolition, abatement, and site preparation costs at 880 First Street.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed?
Items C and Item I.
Was that Item D?
C and I.
C.
C. C is in cap.
Item D.
Item D.
I move we accept the agenda as presented minus Items C, D, and I.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Vice Mayor, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus Items C, D, and I. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssiasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to award Nassau Construction LLC the rehabilitation contract for 1025 East Forest in the amount of $61,100 for the Community and Neighborhood Services Office.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Renssiasipiga. To award the building contract for the rehab services at 1025 East Forest Avenue to Nassau at the lower cost than the original. What was it, 60,000?
61,100.
61,100. Ms. Bailey?
Hi.
Hi.
I don't know if you want to have a staff report or you just want to delve into questions?
No, I'm just gonna wait and see what happens.
All right. So as some of you may have noticed, my motion was different than from what had been recommended by staff, and the reasoning for that was the second lowest bidder was just $49 higher, less than 1%, and they are City of Muskegon business, whereas, to my understanding, Custom Exteriors is not located in the City of Muskegon, and it is the policy of our city that bids submitted, if it's within 1% of the lowest bid, that there's a preference for city businesses. And that's hence my motion for choosing the city-based business that came within 1%, only $49, of the very lowest bid.
And are we confident that Nassau as an organization can meet our needs and...
Oh, absolutely.
Very good. Any other questions or remarks from the Commission on this one? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssiasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner Turnquist?
I make a motion to allow the City Manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the seller.
Support. It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to allow the City Manager to enter into a purchase agreement with the seller of 1188 Fourth Street. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, it's difficult to make a positive motion when I don't agree with what we're talking about here. I've been, you know, I drove by the house and quite frankly, I wouldn't pay $85,000 plus taxes for the house. It's a big house with two or three families living in it, and one of the reasons that was given during discussion last night and previously has been a detriment in moving the Midtown expansion there, and I can understand that. But also in there, if we start taking a house that doesn't look, you know, really good to attract people to come in there, I think there's three others right around it on 1179 where the fireplace is missing, there's one that's boarded up on 1163 Fourth, and another one on 299 has a vacancy or citation, a yellow sign on it. And I just don't think it is the position or the responsibility of the city government to get into the real estate business, to buy a house, spend some money, and try to sell it again, and it looks like we're, you know, to me, we're doing a favor for whoever the owner is that's selling it, so. And then for the redevelopment of the next phase of Midtown Square Homes, we've discussed that, and I think that still needs to be discussed if we're continuing forward and being in the real estate business, which I don't think we should.
Thank you. Any other comments or input on this one? Commissioner Warren?
I think those are really good points. When it comes to the next phase of the Midtown Square Homes, could you give us a brief update on what that would look like?
Sure. The area that we had been discussing was essentially this block right here where we own on this side of the street, essentially every lot except for this particular house. And so the thought was, once we can, once we gain control of this, it'll give us some flexibility on how we line up the houses and how we move the driveways around, how we access the property. I don't think we're at the point yet where we're ready to make the formal recommendation to move forward. With the second phase of Midtown Square, this was a key piece of that puzzle. There's actually one additional lot that is owned by the folks who own the building that Mia and Grace is in, that they anticipate using for parking, and we're still in discussions with them on how that could fit in to Midtown Square, because I think absent this property and absent that property, we end up with, we end up almost de facto having another more suburban development like we did down the street, and I think what we've heard from folks is that we could get a little bit more density there. We don't necessarily need to put the houses right on top of each other, but we're trying to get a little bit more density, a little more walkability, and more people, you know, filled in onto that particular block. If you remember, there was one, the house, this is almost kind of a replacement house for us as part of the project. The house next door to it on Fourth Street was the one we originally intended to buy, and something fell through with the real estate agent, and they ended up either A, not putting our offer in when, you know, when we asked them to, or, and I think that's actually what truly happened, or they just accepted somebody else's offer, but at the end of the day, we did not get the, we didn't get the house. And so we were just put, this one, the owner, the owner expressed an interest in selling it. We've fielded many complaints about it. We, you know, it's kind of sticks out with the fuchsia, you know, with the fuchsia paint and the giant hedge that, you know, was just cut down around it as a, you know, as a detractor. And I think Commissioner Turnquist is right, there are others on that Fourth Street. Community Encompass did a good job down there with the Fourth Street facelift project that they did last summer, and a lot of houses do look a lot better, some of those that he's talking about. One of those, I think, might be the house that Community Encompass recently bought and began renovation on, the one he probably said with the sticker in the window. I think it's a new building permit or something in the window there. So we are seeing a lot of movement on Fourth Street. I've also seen a lot of improvement on Monroe. We've seen a lot of improvement on Third Street. So strategically, it makes a lot of sense that that Midtown Square kind of sits right in the middle of all that and helps push that momentum forward. Whether the next phase of housing after that is in Nelson neighborhood, I think that's to be determined, but I think at least last time we discussed as a group, I seemed to feel there was consensus that it'd stick in that same area, at least for the next small round of houses.
Vice Mayor?
What did this house appraisal?
We didn't, yep, we did not have an appraisal, but we do have the new assessment, and I think Mike can verify, the new assessment was right, was either right above or right around this particular, this particular amount.
Yeah, so the 2018 SEV is 39,400. The true cash value of the property with the land and the building is just under 82,000. So we're right around there, and we feel like we're saving quite a bit of money by not working with a realtor either.
You've got to remember, it's multifamily home, it's occupied, so the investor that's in there obviously is looking at it from an investment standpoint. If he's bringing an X number of dollars in rent, it's hard for him to sell it below market value when they're, when they're all occupied.
So when you say just under 80?
82.
82,000.
Looking more or less under 80, just around 80?
Eighty, it's about $82,000 true cash value with the land and the building included.
Commissioner Warren?
So with this, if this was to be purchased and demoed, how many homes would be added in this next phase of Midtown?
The intent isn't to demo it. I think the intent is to, is to rehab it as part of Midtown Square. I don't think we want to lose a home. The home, you know, the home has at least historic value, you know, on the corner there. It's a corner-built home. It's actually, it's actually a really nice home. But there is some of the side yard that we would try to capture to add homes for Midtown Square. So the goal is on that side of the street that we're able to do at least four on that side of the road, preferably five.
And those would be new builds?
Correct.
Is it preserved and go to single? Single family?
Yeah, either single family or a lower-density multifamily. I think there's three or four units in there now, and it is a big home, so it could, it could probably still function as a, as a two-unit.
Commissioner?
What are the outstanding taxes? Do we know? That's going to be added onto the 85?
I'm not sure what the taxes be on there.
They're just the 2017 taxes, so the bill probably has not come yet.
Yeah.
But it is taxable, and there won't be no way to make it not taxable.
17, we, we've been taxed for 17, we paid that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm talking about 2018 taxable value. I apologize, 2018.
They had, they had until what, February 14th to pay 2017 tax?
Yep, so those, those should have been, those should have been paid. Well, those will...
So they're in arrears.
They're in arrears. They're just going to accrue some interest, but it's not going to foreclose yet.
If, if they haven't been paid, and I guess, and I guess we'll find that out as part of the closing process.
I'd also like to add that quite a bit of money has been put into the home recently. The inspections department got on them a couple years ago for their rental certificates. Quite a bit of work was done with the electric and new furnace as well, so.
Yeah, it has to be all inside, it's not good outside.
No, but yeah, the landlord, he's taken fairly good, good condition with the property and care of it. From the inside.
Commissioner?
I'd say I'm pretty familiar with the area, because I've lived like four or five blocks from there, and I go down Fourth Street every day to the Hackley Park area where MCC has its building. I'd say I'd agree that it's an important transition area from the downtown. It's the closest residential to the downtown area, and I think with Third Street improving, I think it is our best shot to, you know, continue the resurgence through the Midtown Square, and so there's been quite a bit of rehab by different houses in that area, and I think if we expect things to blossom, we do need to have a little bit more of a catalyst. So, and I do agree that the house looks bad right now, and there, you know, it's a little bit hit or miss over there, but I think that if there's more hit and less miss, the whole area will improve, and I think that that will spread out. So I, it's kind of, it does strike you as difficult to, you know, pay that amount of money for a house. But housing has come back, and, you know, I'm familiar with the housing values in that area. I think it's a little bit tough, but I think it's probably fair, and I think it's a good step forward for the city, so.
For the long-term investment, you know, on our part, and I think, you know, it goes to show that, you know, sometimes there's remarks made that, you know, we overly expose ourselves or engage with other type of development, and we forget about the neighborhoods, which, you know, really isn't the case, because a number of our neighborhoods have available to them, you know, the neighborhood enterprise zone designations, their grants. We, you know, through our Community Neighborhood Service Program, we try our, you know, best to help with, you know, stabilization of housing stock and improvement and like, and I think this would be a good investment for, for the neighborhood, and it's one of those steps, again, as I mentioned last night, whether you like it or, or not, old towns are often leaders in and of themselves in their resurgence until the rest of the world catches up with us and, you know, discovers the value. In the meantime, I think it gives us ample opportunity to continue reinvesting in our neighborhoods and our residents, so, you know, I can support this.
One, one other thing too, I just maybe I can point out is, you know, sometimes these ones might stick out where it might seem like this one's a little higher, you know, on the higher end in terms of what we're paying for versus what we're getting, but if you look at, at the other acquisitions that we've made, for example, the last four houses that you guys approved us to take back on tax, on tax sale, we essentially bought those for, you know, for a dollar apiece. You know, we're able to smooth some of that cost out. We had, you know, Tim went through there and had all the traps removed out of them and, you know, and took a good assessment of those, and all, all of those houses, we feel that they're, that they're, that they're great rehab candidates, and they can be put back into use in those neighborhoods. Two of them are NIMs, one of them is McLaughlin, and one of them's in Nelson. So, so we do see, you know, there will be times where we're getting, where we're, we're getting them at a, at a very, very fair price, and other times where we're probably paying more, more market rate for them, but I think we'll see that, that they smooth out amongst each other over the long run.
Commissioner Warren?
When it comes to the mix of properties in this area, I'm just thinking about the displaced families that live there currently, are there similar comparable options in that, in that area?
In that area, yeah, a number of houses, even on that block, the houses that do still exist on that block of Monroe, so across the street on Monroe, every one of those is multifamily. Not to say that there are vacancies right now in them, but there are a number of houses in Nelson neighborhood that are single-family homes that have been turned into multifamily, probably more than any other neighborhood that we have.
But do we know, I guess from that occupied standpoint, how many of them are occupied? How many, what that ratio kind of looks like?
No, no, I do not know. I do know that the, that the owner has, Mike can clarify, has offered to give these folks some assistance with relocation, has he not?
Yeah, he'll be giving them a relocation stipend.
To help make it a little bit easier, much like we did when we bought the house on Second Street to those occupants in there, the, through the, through the seller, were awarded some dollars to help make the move, the move not so burdensome, so they can stay in the neighborhood if they, if they wanted to.
Vice Mayor?
Do we have any idea what that stipend looks like?
I believe it's about $600, $700. That's what he had mentioned.
$700 to relocate.
Commissioner Johnson?
So I understand the strategic reasoning as to why we want to acquire this particular piece of property. I'm wondering what, we haven't fleshed out all the particulars of Phase Two, but I'm wondering about what, what, what's our goal with this property at least? I know you said you were going to rehab it, and it could be a rental income, could be sold, like, are we planning on holding on to this long-term and operating as a landlord?
No.
Are we going to be looking to rehab it and selling it to someone else at the earliest possible date?
Correct.
Okay.
So what, once Tim gets a, you know, gets a good look at it and a good understanding of, you know, of, of the investment that we're going to have to make into it, to either A, take it down to a lower-density multifamily or take it down to a single-family, we'll make a decision, we'll probably put some feelers out and see if there's a, if there's a buyer, you know, maybe even pre, you know, pre-rehab, or if we think that, that there's some improvements we can make to it to make it more marketable to a family. The goal is to, is to, is to get a family in there, obviously, or two families in there. In a lot of those situations, they're not in a position to come in and do a lot of rehab to the house, so sometimes, you know, it ends up being better for us to, to fully rehab them. You know, example is the way that CNS just rehabbed the house out on Eastwood, Eastbrook? Eastwood. What street was that? Onita? Eastbrook, Eastwood, I'm sorry. You know, we, we took possession of that, you know, similar sale and refurbished it, and it's, it's amazing house, ready for, ready for a family.
So have we exhausted our options for working with the current property owner about getting it rehabbed and getting it more in line with what we'd like to be there versus us taking that on, and have we also explored having another community partner come in and do the rehab? Like Community Encompass, they do the rehabs with, with houses and then renting them out. So have we explored that?
I think we've probably exhausted, we've talked to the owner, I've personally talked to the owner at length on the phone. He doesn't, he has no, he, any, any... talked to the owner at length on the phone. He doesn't, he has no, he, any dollars beyond what it takes to keep his rental certificate, you know, he's not interested in putting it into the house. Yeah, there is probably opportunity that we could work with a community partner like Community Encompass, maybe to undertake some of those sorts of things. I guess we haven't thought that far ahead in the process. Our assumption was we were going to use Tim Harvey to do the renovation work there, but that doesn't mean that we can't partner with somebody like Community Encompass who's working on the street already, for sure.
But this isn't going to be a CNS rehab home?
It is not going to be a CNS rehab home. The goal is that it's not income restricted, although it's reasonably affordable for, you know, for typical people that would choose to live in the neighborhood.
And how quickly would we get rehab underway, then?
I don't know.
I mean, because is there a need to have the family leave immediately, or if we're not going to get rehab underway for a while longer?
No, there's probably not a need to make them leave immediately. I think from our standpoint, I don't think we want to be landlords, so we would like to, whenever we take ownership of it, you know, do that after the home has been, you know, has been vacated. And what the timeline is, I don't know if we set the timeline with the owner yet as when that has to happen.
No, but I would like to note that the rental certificate is good until August of 2020, so you really can't really force them to do much for the next couple of years.
But most of the projects you've done, we've done, there has been no displacement. And when there has been displacement, like the one on Second Street, we've made sure that the people had resources to, you know, to get to another home in the neighborhood or wherever they chose as their landing point. And that was a sticking point with us when we talked to this gentleman, too, was to make sure that people weren't displaced without options and without time, simply because we purchased the home. So I don't think we necessarily have to worry about that. Whether or not $700 is a perfect amount or the right amount, you know, I don't know. But, you know, the design was to make sure it was enough so they could have down payment or, you know, security deposit, you know, ready to move into the next place.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Is the motion on the floor?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item I, Commissioner Johnson.
I move to authorize the city manager to reimburse Port Citigroup up to $350,000 to undertake the selective demolition, abatement, and site preparation at 881st Street, which will ultimately be paid back to the City of Muskegon at time of property sale closing and/or occupancy permit is issued.
Support.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to authorize the city manager to reimburse Port Citigroup up to $350,000 to undertake selective demolition, abatement, and site preparation costs at 881st Street, and you had-
Which will ultimately be paid back to the City of Muskegon at time of property sale closing and/or an occupancy permit is issued.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, so I just pulled that from the agenda, just to include that language. We talked about this in depth last night, and we left it with indicating that we did not want to be solely reimbursed through Brownfield, but that we wanted to be reimbursed at a sooner timeframe, whether at property sale closing or occupancy permit is issued, or a combination of the two. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was included. That language specifically was included. Otherwise, I have no other discussion or question since we discussed this considerably last night.
Any other input or points from the rest of the Commission? Mayor?
So was that discussed with Port Citigroup, then, in the motion?
Yeah, if you recall from the meeting yesterday, it was, both of those were options that they, that have at least been discussed. So I don't think it would be a surprise to them on either of those cases, and probably we were going to push for one of those anyway, but having, but understanding and knowing that that's what the Commission wants, will give us, you know, that extra, you know, an extra bit of leverage to require it as we, as we put the purchase agreement together.
And what was the second thing? It was at the, at the time of an occupancy permit being issued, so that's saying that the building got completed and was occupied by whoever it is at that time?
That it's able to be occupied, yeah. Because the other thing Frank was saying last night was, either when the property sale is transacted and closed on, or when all the development costs and funding with the state credits and everything else is brought to bear, which occupancy would happen after that.
Yeah, it clearly would. And it would be whatever entity holds it at that time, so something.
You know, probably, and we'll leave that up to the professionals, like Will, to have that language in the purchase agreement, but it'll be with whomever we're developing with, whether it's, you know, Port City, hopefully Port City and Smith, or if there's a successor group that we're working with.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Turnquist?
When we receive a bid on a demolition like this from Melchion, and there were two other companies, and the list of things that will happen, it's a partial demolition and leaving a skeleton or something, there's a lot of furniture and this and that. Is there a lot of furniture in the building, and is there a bid include their salvage of what they hope to get out of what's inside they're taking out?
Yes, correct, it does. I don't think there's a lot of furniture, per se. There's, there is, there was some furniture left in some of the offices on the upper floors, and there's some shelving and stuff in the basement, but for the most part, those offices were all cleaned out when, you know, when the tenants left years ago. But there is some random furniture kind of strewn throughout there, probably nothing of any real value aside from maybe scrap types of value.
And mold.
Yeah, probably a little bit of that.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings. Item A, please.
Recommendation for annual renewal of liquor licenses, City Clerk. Summary request to adopt a resolution recommending non-renewal of those liquor license establishments who are in violation of Section 50-146 and 50-147 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Muskegon. These establishments have been found to be in non-compliance with the City Code of Ordinances, and renewal of their liquor licenses should not be recommended by the City Commission. And if any of these establishments come into compliance by March 13, 2018, they will be removed from this resolution, and recommendation for the renewal will be forwarded to the Liquor Control Commission. Staff recommendation, adoption of the resolution.
And at this junct, this is a public hearing, so do we have any additional report out on the three outstandings here at this point?
We do not.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this?
The one, El Capatio, that's closed, isn't it?
No, no, they moved to the corner of Seaway and Laketon Avenue from their little, the original Little Stop.
So that's who we're talking about, then?
Correct.
There's three of them on there, yes.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue? If not, I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing and to adopt the resolution. Commissioner?
And when we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution recommending the non-renewal of the liquor licenses as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution recommending annual renewal of liquor licenses, indicating the businesses not in compliance. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item A, under new business, please.
Service firearm program, public safety. Summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the Commission authorize the amount of $49,962.10 for the purchase of department-issued primary handguns for all Muskegon's sworn police officers. This firearms platform proposed, a Glock 17 Gen V piston, will replace our current system where officers purchase and attempt to maintain a primary duty weapon at their expense, which has been less than successful. Muskegon police officers currently carry a Sig Sauer semi-auto pistol with multi-ammunition options. This firearm is expensive to purchase, and the use of three options of ammunition is costly for the department and can present logistical issues in the field. Allowing different calibers and primary service weapons is not recommended, and ammunition is not interchangeable with the handguns, again, causing logistical issues. Our proposed platform increases police safety, police officer safety and efficiency with a move to a one-caliber system department-wide for the proposed primary deputy weapon. The department will own, maintain, issue, and check in firearms and support equipment as officers pass through our department from hire to retirement. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this platform to update and enhance the department with primary service pistols and supporting equipment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve, I move for the approval of this platform to update and enhance the department with primary service pistols and supporting equipment.
Support. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Turnquist, to approve the platform to update and enhance the department with primary service pistols and supporting equipment. Questions or discussion? Commissioner Warren?
Can we, we talked about this at length last night. Chief, would you mind giving just a really brief overview of what this means? And especially, you did such a great job yesterday highlighting how this is going to improve our public safety, improve officer safety. Could you just give a kind of a brief synopsis of this, please?
Certainly. Yeah, last night we discussed in depth our firearms program at the Muskegon Police Department. And approximately for about 23 years, we've had a system where the officers had to purchase the Sig Sauer pistol upon employment and then pay for that weapon either by, you know, through their own means or through like a city loan, so to speak. We had noticed over the years, the program was not that successful. The guns aged. We had multiple different calibers for our ammunition out there. When the guns were in disrepair or needed repair, we still had to purchase firearms ourselves, the Sig Sauer, which was approximately about $700 per weapon. So at that time, we started looking at options. I would say the vast majority of departments in Michigan supply the handguns and the rifles for their officers. We do supply shotguns and rifles, but not the handguns. So we did some testing and evaluating. We also did some, just looking at the costs of different handguns out there. A gun I'm very experienced with is the Glock manufacturer. A Glock is the same type of platform. It shoots a 9mm round. The guns, at our cost, law enforcement was $409, which was significantly less than the Sig Sauer. It provides equal to, I believe it's an enhanced platform over the Sig Sauer because of the safety, how the gun is gender-neutral with male or female. It's also hand-neutral. It can service a left-hander and a right-hander. It's very efficient. It's very simplistic. And so we chose that firearm. We then had to find a funding source. We do have drug forfeiture money, and we feel that we could, you know, put this whole program into place without impacting negatively the general fund. We put together a team to look at this, our range officers. We contacted our police officers' union, because there were some contract notations that allowed them to carry a 45 caliber, a 38 caliber, and a 9mm, which we felt was just basically out of date. It's just not normal for a department to have to supply all those different types of ammunition, and the difference between them, which I'm not going to go into. So we noticed that the federal government, through their FBI agents, and they did a vast study. They found the 9mm was the best for efficiency. They're again gender-neutral, where males and females or the size of the agent or officers could be more proficient with a smaller round that doesn't kick so hard. And so they had recommended the 9mm for all federal agents. And so we've adopted that theory also, and we feel we're going to increase our proficiency. We will actually save money in our ammunition, because the 9mm ammunition is much cheaper than the 45 ammunition, and we'll finally have firearms that are owned, maintained, and issued by the department. We will be at one caliber, which means the ammunition, it's interchangeable. We won't have to worry about mixing it up at the range or having different types of rounds and guns, which is much safer for the officers. So we came together, asked the Commission to authorize the 4996210 to purchase 90 Glock 17 Gen V's and the required holsters and magazine pouches to put this in effect. And 2018 will be what we call our transition year. And I actually had some information. One of the Commissioners had a question about if we could actually purchase the guns through the US manufacturing. The gun is an Australian weapon, or excuse me, Austrian weapon. And I did call our Midwestern representative. They do make a manufactured line of the Gen V's, because we talked about the Gen IV last night, but they have yet to start the 2018 line of the Gen V's. So if I put the request in today, they said it would probably be a wait time, if everything went right and the request was met, 90 to 120 days. We feel that's quite extensive, and it could interfere with us completing this whole transition to 2018. So I asked if the Commission would allow me to buy those, even though they are the Austrian-manufactured Glocks, because they are in stock now, and I'd have to wait probably three to four months to get the US-manufactured Austrian Glocks, if that makes sense.
It does. Any other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for looking into that, as to whether or not the US-made versions are available. And I have no problem, given that, you know, you want to get this transition started as soon as possible, and the 90 to 120 days is not a guarantee that we'd even have that in the 90 to 120-day period. So I'm fine with you going forward and buying what's available now. I would just encourage and request that going forward, as we're doing replacements, that we aim to purchase the US-made version, as long as it's not a considerable extra cost. But it sounds like that, the way that I heard from you before, is that it wouldn't have made a difference cost-wise. It's just a timeliness matter right now. So that's-
That's correct.
I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, Chief. Any roll call, please?
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Administrative vehicle replacement DPW equipment. Summary request. Authorize staff to purchase three Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet, the MI deal state contract holder. This will replace the three oldest administrative vehicles currently being used. Cost to the city will be $23,183 per vehicle. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase three Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet.
Commissioner?
I move we authorize staff to purchase three Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaas Sibiga, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize staff to purchase three Chevy Impalas from Berger Chevrolet. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner?
Yeah, how many of these vehicles do we, I have four questions. How many vehicles do we have? At what mileage do we retire them? Who uses them? And how many are used on a daily basis?
Yeah, I'll let Chief answer those questions. These are his.
Commissioner, I think I got most of those questions, but if I missed one, please ring me back in. The, our vehicles range between a 2017 down to, I believe, about a 2005 or 2006, what we have right now. Our most recent, I guess, discussion on replacing the vehicles is approximately 10 years we have the cars, and about 115,000 to 120,000 Most of the cars are used every day. They're called administrative police vehicles because they're assigned to civilians. They're assigned to our community liaison coordinator. Our investigative bureau drives the vehicles, and our police administrators drive the vehicles. That's why we call them administrative police vehicles. The mileage can vary from over 100,000, and some of the older cars have as little as maybe 60,000, 70,000 miles. But we've concentrated more on trying to rotate the vehicles to get mileage equalization. But sometimes it's not possible because of our current radio system. Different radios are put into cars for different reasons. Like, my radio is more conducive to public safety than it is just police. It's a problem I think we're going to solve in the very near future. Then we can rotate those cars to get the miles up. But we had some cars, like I said, were 2005, 2006, so those cars were in service for 13 years. And anyone knows that even though the mileage sometimes can be low, like 60,000 or 70,000 miles-